Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:43 a.m. You may join today's meeting in person or join via Zoom webinar. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. Trustee Perez has indicated that he needs to participate remotely under the Just Cause Remote Appearance exception to the Brown Act. Specifically as permitted by the Brown Act, trustee Perez is traveling for business of another state or local agency and the district accepts this as a valid reason under the Act for Remote Appearance. We will now proceed with the roll call. President Martinez Garcia, please proceed with the roll call.
Student trustee James. Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Here.
Trustee Meyer.
Sir.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
Trustee Oden.
Present.
Trustee Kineman.
Present.
I would like to invite trustee Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, trustee Sanchez Fulton. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 Subdivision B2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present. That there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the board and local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Under Item 2.02, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for July 24, 2025? Item 22.02 will be removed from the agenda and the board will not have a conference with legal counsel under that agenda item during closed session. That is the one change to the agenda. Public comments, 3.01, request to address the board of trustees regarding regular agenda items. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link. Pursuant to the district administrative procedure, 2345, each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comment section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the public who wish to speak regarding regular agenda items. And an opportunity to address the board on matters not related to the agenda will be available during the item 20.01 of today's agenda. And Jeff, or Irene, do we have any comments that have been received?
At this time, we have no persons wishing to speak via the Zoom webinar. None have been brought forward from those in person in the boardroom. There is one emailed public comment that's been posted to the agenda.
Okay, great.
From Jenna Hunsinger, college faculty.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Jeff. Public updates, 4.0, new employee appointments. President Martinez Garcia, please help us introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to call on Vice President Wilson to introduce the new employee appointments.
Right. Good morning, everyone. Our new team member appointments for June are Esther Luna Diaz, Instructional Support Specialist at TASK, and Anthony Smith, Computer Support Specialist. Welcome to our team.
Thank you, active Vice President Wilson, and congratulations to our new employee appointments.
Excuse me, Chair. Do they want to make a comment? That would be nice. We used to get comments. You need comments? Yeah. Oh, God. You. Foot.
Test.
Test? All right. Hi, board. Good morning. My name is Anthony. I'm the new CSS Computer Support Specialist for the IT Department team. And I just want to say I'm very proud and happy to be here at College of the Desert. So thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you. We're moving on to Item 3.01, request to address the board of trustees regarding regular agenda items. No. Sorry, I was going to go back in time there for a minute. At this time, we will be moving to closed session, Item 5.01. The board will now recess to closed session. The live feed of this meeting will continue. Board members and President Martinez Garcia, I ask that you please join closed session at 9:55 a.m. Thank you.
There was no reportable action taking during, thank, during closed session. Thank you. Item seven point oh one, approval of the June twelfth, two thousand twenty five regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the regular meeting minutes of June twelfth, two thousand twenty five? And do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. President Garcia, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Abstain.
Osha carries.
Okay, at this time, we will go into the board reports per policy, policy twenty three eleven. All reports will be limited to five minutes each. We'll begin first with our associated students of College of the Desert. Juan Falcone Ascot President.
Good morning, members of the board trustees, President Val Martinez, faculty, dedicated staff and members of the public. On behalf of the Associated Students of College of the Desert Ascot, I want to thank everyone, every student who exercised their right to vote this year. Fifteen Senate positions were filled with only three returning members from the previous body. A level of participation that speaks volumes about how strong students want to be represented. I am humbled, grateful and excited to have been elected as Ascot's president. I look forward to working with all of you to advance initiatives that help students and employees to make this institution exceptional. I also want to acknowledge the many talented employees who have retired or moved on. Their service has shaped C O D and it will be missed. At the same time, I remain hopeful about our future. To the new employees, welcome and to everyone who earned a promotion, congratulations. Your leadership will help us reach new heights. As you know, my last report was candid but offered a constructive spirit. Since then, I've had a productive conversation with President Martinez and I have eager to work, collaborate with Carlos abandonado and the O S L team to strengthen the foundation for future C O D student leaders. Finally, Ascot has yet, has yet to held the first official meeting. Our Student Senate will meet on August eighteen from two to four. I encourage students, staff and members of the board trustees to stop by whenever you can and see the work that we are undertaking on behalf of our student body. Thank you for your time, for your continued commitment to our students and to College of the Desert. I look forward to the year ahead.
At this time, we have the College of the Desert Foundation, Eddie Hernandez, our Director of Development.
Good morning, trustees, student trustee James, Vice Presidents and Superintendent President, Mr. Val Martinez Garcia. It's that time of the year where we already, already planning for stepping out for C O D two thousand twenty six, our citizens of Distinction Gala. Committee Chairs Christine Anderson and Sherry Stewart have been hard at work and have already held a few productive meetings. On July eighth, two thousand five, two thousand twenty five, we had our first full committee meeting. Despite the fact that we're in summer, almost everyone on this year's very robust committee was able to attend. We're absolutely delighted to share the Green Family Foundation, along with Jim and Jessica Green, have committed once again in serving as our presenting and visionary sponsors for another year. Please help us thank Jim and Jessica for their incredible generosity and continued belief in our students. We're also entering the second year of our three-year pledge from Jordan Schnitzer, which means we're kicking things off with an amazing one hundred and fifty thousand dollar steady up commitment to help College of the Desert students reach their goals, earn their degrees and certificates, and of course, cross that all-important finish line. You can expect a similar format to last year, silent and live auction and a paddle raise, as well as honoring our second inductee to the Alumni Hall of Fame and the president's awardee. There will be lots of new surprises, so more to come on that. We will have saved the dates to hand out to you soon and hope that you will consider sponsoring or purchasing tickets. Stepping out for C O D, Citizens of Distinction Gala will be held on January thirty first, two thousand twenty six, at the Aqua Clean and Casino in Rancho Mirage. State of the College, on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, this year, we are also excited to invite you all to State of the College. This year's theme is integrating A I in education and beyond. There's a lot of planning underway for the event, and we want to thank C I S Professor Patrick Jacobs, radio TV Professor Ron DeGenova and film producer Professor Stephanie Bell for spending a portion of their summer with us, planning all the details. It's been pretty fun. They have all had really amazing inputs, one of which includes an iconic starlet who will be resurrected to greet our, to greet our guests, so that's going to be an exciting for State of the College. This event is scheduled at the Thompson Hotel in beautiful Palm Springs. We are planning an early evening event to take full advantage of the beautiful view from the new resort. E blast promoting the event will be hitting your inboxes soon, so stay tuned for those. We want to give a big, huge thank you to our president's business circle members, who's also members, include recognition at State of the College. So thank you to our platinum sponsor, Augustine Band of Koki Indians, Augustine Casino, our gold sponsors Ferguson Wallman and Amazon, and our silver sponsor, C W Driver. In addition, we have a few updates for our fundraising efforts. The foundation was recently notified of a fifty thousand dollar grant from the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. The funding will support the purchase of an additional power gurney, as well as simulation monitors for the paramedic program. To date, this brings the foundation's fundraising total for this program to over two hundred thousand dollars. Amazon gifted twenty thousand, which makes them our newest president's business circle. And as I mentioned, a portion of their sponsorship will support State of the College. We are thrilled to announce the newest member of our diamond-level president circle membership, John Trevino. John attended last year's stepping out for C O D and is a brand-new donor to the foundation and a huge supporter to College of the Desert. Working in partnership with the grants office, the foundation was recently invited to apply for another year of funding from the Richard Brook Foundation. Funding awarded from this grant supports textbooks, tuition and fees for students who are enrolled in the pledge program. To date, the Richard Brook Foundation has invested a little more than one point four million dollars. If we are successful in receiving the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar requested grant in this year's proposal, it will bring the total giving to nearly one point seven million to ensure access for all students seeking higher education. So we should know more in September and we'll, we'll keep you posted. Thank you all. This concludes my report.
At this time, we have College of the Desert Alumni Association, Betsy Young, our Alumni Association Executive Director, and I don't believe anyone's present to present that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
A written report was submitted.
Okay, thank you. For the record, a written report was submitted. California State, California School Employees Association, C S E A, David Schutze, C S E A, Second Vice President.
Good morning, Superintendent President Martinez Garcia, Board of Trustees and Vice Presidents. As we begin the new school year, C S E A wants to thank the district for signing off on last year's contract. We are ready and excited to begin collaborating with the district to get this year's negotiations completed quickly. C S E A supports the district's desire to revive the caring campus initiative. Caring Campus began in two thousand twenty with C S E A members, confidential employees and leadership. Although the plans the team had were halted throughout the pandemic, we are back in action and moving forward with the full support of the executive cabinet. Thank you Superintendent Martinez Garcia for your drive and vision as it pertains to classified staff. Although we are in our summer intercession, operations continue to provide support for our campus and community. Here are a few of the events that have occurred recently. Summer Session and the First Session of Edge started on June ninth. We welcomed three hundred fifty avid students for a tour of the college on June seventeenth. Our thanks go out to all of you who continue to go above and beyond to support important events like this. On June twenty-third, the City of Palm Springs hosted the A I and Creativity Expo. The Palm Springs campus was selected to host one of the sessions in their computer lab. Kudos to College of the Desert staff for demonstrating hands-on A I applications in music, video and visual arts. And a shout-out to our Public Safety and M and O Department employees for working long hours on the Fourth of July to help ensure the community could enjoy the event safely. Your commitment to our community is appreciated. On July twentieth, three C S E A members traveled to Reno, Nevada, for the ninety-ninth C S E A Annual Conference to engage with other members from across the state to discuss challenges, exchange ideas and debate resolutions. We're excited to represent our C O D classified members at this annual event. Progress, adaptation, upgrades, improvements and rejuvenation are the words and actions that best describe what has been trending at our district for the last few months. We thank you for your continued commitment. Thanks.
Okay, next, our College of the Desert Adjunct Association, C O D D A, C O D A A, C O D A. We have Michael Gladish, our President of C O D A.
I'm not getting off. It's not going well. All right, here we go. Mister Chair, members of the board, Superintendent President Martinez Garcia and members of the leadership team. First, let me say what an honor it is to be speaking to you this morning, representing four hundred and sixty-five part-time faculty who teach a majority of the sections at College of the Desert. Last month, I tried to speak to you, but I was unsuccessful. I understand that you could see me on the screen, but due to technical difficulties, you could not hear me. But some might say that was a blessing. C O D A is delighted at the news that our college has not just met, but exceeded our enrollment target of ten thousand two hundred full-time equivalent students. This achievement reflects an outstanding effort of faculty, staff and the leadership team, particularly our deans. All their hard work has brought us to the brink of a new era of strategic growth, and it's exciting to the adjuncts. I want to give the board an update on the hundred percent state-funded part-time faculty health insurance program that is now part of the C O D A bargaining agreement. This program reimburses qualifying adjuncts for their health insurance premiums. Why is it important? Well, a full-time faculty member receives up to about seventeen hundred dollars a month in health benefits on top of their salary, and an equally qualified adjunct teaching the same sections does not receive this health benefit. Therefore, this program of health insurance reimbursement is a step toward equal pay for equal work. It's a small step. Only twenty-five have been approved out of the four hundred sixty-five, but they are but the dignity of every college employee, whether part-time or full-time. At a flex meeting last year on restoring trust in our college institution, attended by faculty, staff, leadership, pretty much everybody, Val, you were there, someone gave us this. I don't know if you can see it, but it's a puzzle piece. On it is inscribed, "Thank you for being an essential piece of our team." We're all part of a human puzzle. All of us are different, like puzzle pieces, and all of us equal pieces in the human community, equally essential, equally worthy in our humanity, and that is the foundation of our dignity. And by the way, that's why we have collective bargaining agreements to guarantee that dignity to everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, we have our College of the Desert Faculty Association, Association, CODFA. Adam Gill is the CODFA President. And...
President Gill is not in the room, Trustee Kineman, and no report was submitted from CODFA.
Okay, great. We look forward to hearing from him hopefully next month. Next, we have our Academic Senate President, Corbin Wild. My understanding is Corbin's not present, but she did submit a written report.
Herr Kineman, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. We'll move on to our Governing Board, our Student Trustee James. Welcome, Student Trustee James.
Good morning, Board members, President Val, and members of the public. Campus engagement is generally low in summer classes. However, that hasn't stopped us from continuing to lay the groundwork for the upcoming academic year. Last month, I participated in a student leadership retreat alongside Associated, Associated ASCOD members, sorry, slipping me. We focused on building stronger collaboration, aligning on shared goals, and setting the tone for a more intentional and unified approach going into the new academic year. Next month, we will meet again and plan to be assigned to our College of the Desert Committees by our President Juan. I also plan on going to the student retreat, the student trustee retreat. And I met with ASCOD President and Director of Student Life to explore strategies to best serve my role this upcoming year. I carry the responsibility of representing students across all College of the Desert campuses, and I take that responsibility seriously. I'm committed to identifying and elevating the most common recurring issues that affect large portions of our student population. To do this effectively, I plan to curate accessible student surveys that help pinpoint their top concerns, whether related to academics, student services, financial aid, or campus climate. This will ensure the board hears what matters most to our student body, based on real patterns and collective voices. Lastly, I appreciate your time today. I do have a final later this evening, and my six-year-old has a basketball game. So respectfully, I will have to step out a bit early today. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
So refreshing to hear this. That's why we're here. And just to go, I would love our, I hope you're working with our faculty so they could assist you to get those surveys and to get those ideas on what the students are wanting. I think it's so important. So I really appreciate that idea. And whatever, I'm sure the college staff will be helping you, help you with developing those surveys. I think those are so key. So I'm excited for that, and that's why we're here. So I just, right now, before I begin my report, I just want to thank my fellow Board of Trustees members. You know, we're elected, and we're volunteers here in the community, and we represent the respected areas of the Coachella Valley. So I just want to thank my fellow Board of Trustees for their dedication, attending events, and just being out there and representing the College of the Desert. That takes a lot. So just, we forget to acknowledge our fellow trustees and my board member and the president when we meet with the people in the Coachella Valley and getting to hear what their needs are. So that's something. I just want to also mention, and I went to the retirement for our dear Irene Morales with my other, I believe, other board members attended. So I just want to acknowledge her dedication and her dedication to come out today when she currently is in another position. And I also want to thank Patricia publicly, Donna, for her service to the president's office. So thank you so much. I just want to publicly acknowledge their dedication, and especially Irene coming here today to help us. Also, I just saw the signs, you know, Chip, the sign out there on Monterey and San Pablo, and the white, the new painting, the smell of the college when we're walking in. We're proud to be road runners. So I just want to thank publicly that that new refresh for the upcoming year and for the faculty and the staff that they work every single day. And that means a difference to see a nice, you know, signage and paint. So thank you again, Chip, for getting us on par and moving forward. Something that was very special for me was attending the AI conference. I want to thank Alex, the faculty, the deans, the president, everyone who came, and my fellow trustee, trustee Meyer, who also attended that, and the conference. And Val, just want to let, our president was one of our speakers at the AI conference. So it was awesome that we're shining throughout the Coachella Valley and letting them, we are the number one college in training and in for the future of AI. So that was very, very awesome that we all got together and we showcased what we as road runners are, our faculty, our team, our family, because we are COD on that. Also wanted to see more of that, maybe get an update from maybe in a future agenda item. I'm using my time, Chairman, but I just wanted just on, an update on what we're doing for trainings. Because when I attended the AI conference, I also attended the follow-up. And all the leaders that were there, all the speakers, the sponsors, et cetera, where do we go from here in the Coachella Valley? And you know, I raised my hand and I said, "The college is here for you." So that's our commitment for that, and I just want to make sure that we're there and committing for future training for the students, and not only for our students, but for the faculty. As you all know, as a professor of the College of the Desert that I taught here, I think it's also training our faculty, the ongoing training. How could we train you to be better faculty members, better classified? That is so, so important. When we're here every single day, you're here helping our students, especially right now. We're all getting ready for the fall and getting ready for the, for our students. Because our main mission, we're not a college. It's about the students. I just always want to make sure that it's about their experience and getting them trained and getting jobs. I just want to mention another item is I visited, you know how passionate I am about our food bank and for all our resources? So I visited the food bank and our food pantry and visited all. And I just want to thank everyone, publicly, Find Food Bank, and all the resources and people who put together those resources. I would love to see, as I keep on mentioning, the COD closet, something that we, as a faculty and as our classified, we could donate. I'm doing a shout out and a call out of action. If we have gently used professional clothing and we can give it to our students so they could interview, that means a lot to them, because sometimes the clothing, you know, that would be great if our faculty could, maybe we could have like bins somewhere in the campus and wanted to let the public know we're having a backpack, those with children. Just wanted to mention, this Saturday, we're having a back, free backpack giveaway in Desert Hot Springs at the Desert Recreation. And then today, there's a free backpack giveaway at the, sponsored by the police officers from 11 to 2 today in Cathedral City. I just have to mention that. And there's, oh, my time, let me just mention one more item, please. I get so passionate for this. Wanted, I also attended the Indian Women's Club. I want to give out a shout out to all the women's club. Why? Because they provide scholarships. It's so important that we support these women's club, because they're giving the actual scholarships. We just gave out another 20 from the Indian Women's Club. And it's so important, when I attend that, that we acknowledge that the College of the Desert is there for them. And what else? Oh. Also, I met, I am part of now something called the CLEAR Committee. So currently, I just want to just put, put it out there. Currently, San Bernardino Valley College trains all the water districts and the sewage districts. We are, we, having attended now this meeting, we are now trying to see that if the College of the Desert can educate a good-paying job in the public sector, so we could train the next generation of people in water, sewage. So it would be wonderful if we could maybe go through the PACE project. We have a faculty member already in place, and I've been just having meetings with the water districts to make sure that we could all collaborate. So that was the good news. Going to these meetings, they're saying, Mary Jane, we want the College of the Desert to help in our training, and we are, just wanted to see that. And basically, Desert Hot Springs High School has a training already, and we just want to have like a, what could, we want to do that. So I'm just maybe a future agenda item, the future. So that's a great opportunity for our students to get a high-paying job in the water and sewage. This ends my report, and have a great week. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Meyer.
Good morning, Board, and President Val Martinez Garcia and the public who's viewing this. I'd like to begin by extending heartfelt appreciation to our dedicated staff who coordinated a wide range of campus upgrades over the past few weeks, including parking lot enhancements, signage, improvements to trash recycling systems, and also to the July 4th security and parking assistance. While summer may bring a tighter, a lighter academic load, this team works year-round to uphold our standing as the only community college featured on the list of the top 100 most beautiful campuses in the nation. More recently, I attended many events on behalf of the college, like Trustee Sanchez Fulton does. I'll list some of them here. I went to an MPO-centric certificate graduation program. That's a business program graduates earn a nonprofit certificate, business certificate, through a partnership with UC Riverside. This is sponsored by the Regional Access Project and MPO-centric. I also had the privilege of attending the Carry On Foundation Scholarship Awards. 90 scholarships were presented to local high school seniors, inspiring investment in the next generation. I'm very happy to say I attended a webinar on parliamentary procedures, and because of this, I'm proud to share that I've earned my CCLC trustee certification.
Good job.
Get over here. What? Would you like this? But I'm not stopping. There's future CCLC events I'm going to attend. I've already signed up for and continue this learning process and this sharing process. I got to attend the Pulse of Progress, State of Healthcare, Eisenhower Medical Center, delivered presentations on addressing today's healthcare challenges. Like Sanchez, Trustee Sanchez Fulton, and President Val Martinez, I was at the Palm Springs AI and Creativity Expo 2025. Very exciting to see how the college participated, not just our president of the college, but we sacrificed our Palm Springs campus for these people to go on campus. Sacrifice is not really the right word, but we did. They went away for three or four hours, these teams, and came back with these wonderful AI-created short film videos. If you haven't seen them, got to find a way to find them. And learned a lot about how AI impacts business, as well as the residential uses of AI. Also, I did attend the follow-up event, thanking the sponsors and the dignitaries, shall we say? And there's an excitement in the room to keep that event moving forward, doubling, tripling it in size, and really pushing forward to make the valley an AI destination or significant in the AI. On a personal milestone, I celebrated my birthday. I'm going to put him on the spot. So did our chair celebrate a birthday in June. Separate birthdays, and yours also. Wonderful. And I took a restorative vacation to Washington State with our nine-year-old granddaughter. It's now been seven months since I was sworn in as a trustee, and the role has exceeded my expectations in scope and depth. And I'm continuing to learn about our governance structure, the responsibilities entrusted to trustees, and the strategic importance of our leadership in shaping the college's future. I remain fully committed to this journey and eager to contribute in even greater ways ahead. Here's a vision I'd like the college to pick up on. Coachella Valley is uniquely positioned to brand itself as a national center for artificial intelligence. The recent AI and Creativity Expo was an important step forward in this branding effort. COD has embraced the momentum by encouraging faculty to explore AI's role in curriculum development. Our emerging Palm Springs Innovation Center holds tremendous promise as an incubator of ideas, talent, and organizations focused on AI. As a technology entrepreneur and leader, I intend to ensure that College of the Desert continues to elevate its focus on this transformative revolution. At the same time, we must remain deeply invested in the academic foundation that brought us here, medical education, public service academy, business, and other core disciplines. By anticipating future trends and evolving accordingly, we will ensure our graduates are prepared to lead with confidence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Meyer. Trustee Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. I apologize I couldn't be there in person today. I really wish I could. Applying the Just Cause Provision under California Civil Bill 2449 in order to tune in virtually. I don't have too much to report today, just that I miss you all. It feels like it's been a hot minute since I've seen you, and that everyone's staying cool this summer and enjoying their summer sessions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and we're glad to see your face. At this time, we'll move to Trustee Ron Oden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've attended some two-by-twos, webinars, and I was a speaker at the nonpartisan Good Trouble Rally in Palm Springs this past week. I miss the classroom. I'm enjoying this, but I miss being in the classroom. So I decided to just stop students and talk to them, or just young people. And several of those young people that I have been speaking with recently are now enrolled or re-enrolled at College of the Desert. So I'd like to say a special thank you to President Val Martinez Garcia for following up with each of those students. And I've been in touch with them almost on a daily basis, and they are so encouraged. Look, as an instructor, you have one perspective. And we start the semester off with all of these expectations of these students and what you're going to do to get through your semester. But it's so different for them. They start the semester, many of them, with a new job, where the supervisor has promised them their schedule. And all of a sudden, the schedule is gone. And they're all set mentally and emotionally to attend school, but they can't. These are some of the factors that our students are dealing with, that sometimes as instructors, it goes right over our heads. All we know is that we call the name, and they're not in the chair. And if by a certain time, you're not in that chair, you're gone. I am so... I am so encouraged by the enrollment stats. It's really, really good news. But what would make it better is that we, if we retain the majority of those students. I'd like for us to develop a strategy for how we retain students. That first week, that first class session, find out who may need some special help. You know, they may be embarrassed to respond, but there's someone out there who knows just what to say to break down that wall. So I think we, having a strategy, a plan specifically of how do we retain as many students as possible. Last Friday, the tribes were presented with a $10 million check.
Yes, $10 million.
Which is really encouraging. The only challenge that they're facing is that it's a state check. My bad. Because we know the state's in such trouble. But I'm encouraged because I know that we've been working with them on the development of the Indian Nations College. And I'm not sure exactly where we are now. I'd like at some point a report of back, just where we are and how we can be of assistance in educating and developing the workforce, period. Something that documents and cements our relationship and our intentions with them. That clearly, yeah, that clearly expresses our commitment in the educational arena. Thank you to Classify, to the faculty, to staff and administration for the increase in FTES. We need that. We're, we are approaching our goal. But let's take it a step further. And let's make sure that we retain and assist these students with their lives. This is a different world today. You know, we, we often look at elementary school because, you know, they're feeding the children and doing so many things, but it's not that much different at this level. We're doing the same things to assist the adults and the parents. So the whole educational arena has flipped on its, on its head, but we'll adjust. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Oden. And again, on sync, that's been quite a milestone for them over the years, working with College of the Desert. And it's something I think that we can be uniquely proud of, having them as a partner to become the only accredited California Indian Nation College in this state. And as large as this state is, that's, that's quite a feat. Being from the Midwest, there's a lot of tribal colleges in much smaller states that have been recognized for, for decades. And so it's, it's very positive to see that coming together with bipartisan support in the budget, which often is lacking in so many ways. So I'm, I'm very happy that you brought that up. I also want to thank our Superintendent President for, if you haven't noticed, some of the simplest things matter. He's, he and his staff have put a clock up there, so I can keep track without looking at my phone, what time it is, and also notice how long we're speaking, so that we're not speaking too much longer than what we ask our audience to speak. So it's, it's a, it's a good reminder for me because I never could understand those lights that were there at the podium on what they meant. So again, thank you, Mr. President, because simple things matter in my mind, okay? Again, I'd like to welcome our new employees. And again, we've already mentioned them. I'd like to congratulate our employees that have been extended in their roles. They're so critical for us, and you're doing fabulous jobs. The President hasn't told me otherwise, so I'm going to say that in a very broad, all-of-you positive roles. And also those that are being promoted into permanent positions. So congratulations. And Eddie Hernandez, I think, brought up some good points. Our Director of Development from the foundation. We have had people that have supported the college over the years in so many ways. And he mentioned Jim and Jessica Green. Both, they're a very lovely couple. They're always there. They always step up for the college every year in their sponsorships. Jordan Schnitzer and, and his parents, his related parents. They've been here supporting this college in many, many ways. And we always know they're gonna be there, and that they've committed to be there for us. And so, again, my appreciation, I think all of our appreciation to them for identifying COD as someplace that they know where their investments in this college has a direct investment in our students. And so I, I think we can't thank them enough, together with the Foundation Board of Directors, planning a state of the college and all these different events by volunteers. That is not easy to coordinate the logistics and everything else when, you know, I'm sure there are more fun things to do, but maybe not more fulfilling things to do. So again, express our appreciation to them as well. And at this time, I'll ask our Superintendent President for his report.
Little-known fact, I put the clock up there for myself. I know I can be long-winded. Brevity is not a specialty of mine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On July 9th, I had the privilege to co-present an update to the Palm Springs City Council about the Palm Springs campus. I'd like to thank all the trustees that were there, Trustee Sanchez Fulton and Trustee Oden for their support. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Scott Atkins, who helped me present. We provided a comprehensive overview of our construction progress, including the completion of an underground infrastructure by mid-September and the upcoming, what we're calling, Going Vertical Ceremony. We also highlighted the development of the flagship academic and workforce programs in hospitality, culinary arts, digital media, and film, as well as health, and of course, the AI hub. And the university-centered partnership with Cal Poly Pomona was also something we wanted to make sure the city knew that we were going forward with. The council expressed strong support for our shared vision. I believe Mayor DeHart stated something to, something to the effect of, "We are excited to become a college town in 2027." The meeting reinforced the strength of our partnership with the City of Palm Springs and the transformation, transformative, sorry, transformative, I'm just having trouble today, potential of the $405 million investment in our region's future. These efforts directly advance the board's goals to expand access, enhance regional partnerships, and align programming with local economic and workforce needs. We're excited about our Palm Springs partnership. We also wanna, I also want to highlight that our Desert Hot Springs monument is coming close to actually being installed. A new monument sign modeled after the Mecca Thermal Campus sign, about 75 or 70% scale, has been approved. Installation is expected to begin as, as late as August, but as early as August, actually. This initiative is bonded with a broader sign refurbishment that is going across the campus, and you'll see them also at the other campuses. This project supports the board's goals around equitable viability, consistent with identity across campuses, and improvement of community engagement. I'd also like to echo many of the board's comments today regarding our campus staff, specifically around our infrastructure enhancements here at the Palm Desert Campus. We've seen significant upgrades to support student experience and operational efficiencies. You've seen trash cans, waste management. Some outdoor amenities have been improved, seating and shade structures. Parking lots are being rebuilt. Parking Lot 4 and 5 were fully rebuilt and resurfaced. Parking Lot 4 now is designated for guest use. We've also had wayfinding upgrades, signage updates, and major entrances. As you noted earlier, San Pablo and Monterey are both underway, as well as landscaping work is in progress all across the campus. Also, just so you know, we have hydration stations and restroom upgrades as well. And of course, HVAC, new long-term service agreements are in place for the improvement and better system reliability. These improvements directly tie to the board's focus on facilities modernization and creating welcoming space for our students and to help our students see the beautiful campus that they are so used to seeing. I'd also like to echo the board's comments, as well as for our improvements with our FTES. Specifically, we hit our goal and then surpassed it by 134 FTEs. Again, it's a testament to the hard work of our deans, our directors, our staff, and as well as the faculty. And Trustee Oden, we are gonna work hard on that retention issue. Recently, I was asked whether my emphasis on human dignity represents a shift away from our focus on DEIA. My simple answer is no. It is an expansion, not a replacement. Human dignity is the foundation upon which DEIA work can thrive. It reinforces the inherent worth of every student, every employee, and every community member. By affirming human dignity, we are not moving away from equity and inclusion. We are anchoring them in a universal principle that resonates across all populations and programs. Human dignity, as Michael put so eloquently earlier, is a focus of our campus moving forward, and it's something that we are gonna work to embrace in all aspects of what we do. I'm excited to report to the board that we are going to have an upcoming leadership retreat where we're gonna explore how human dignity, this principle, intersects with our evolving dynamics in higher education. I'm excited for our opportunity to, to break bread, to talk to one another in a, in a space outside of the campus where we can set a forward, a direction for the college for the next academic year. Lastly, but not least, today's my son Nick's birthday. He is 17. I bring that up because I know he might be watching later, and just let him know how much I love him and I appreciate all the hard work he's, he does every day to be the best son ever. No offense to Trey Garcia, who might be watching, but it's, it's, it's Nick's day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So moving on to item 9.01, Consent Agenda. All consent items will be voted on in one motion. Any board member may request that any items be removed to the action agenda. Are there any requests to separately consider any of the consent agenda items? All right, hearing done. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote? President Garcia.
Student trustee James? Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, no items were pulled from consent agenda, so we will move on to Agenda Item 15.01, Board Member Travel 2025 Association of Community College Trustees Governance Leadership Institute. Do I have a motion to approve for up to two members to attend the 2025 ACCT Governance Leadership Institute as presented?
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. President Garcia.
Student trustee James? Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah, Item 15.02, Board Member Travel 2025 Association of Community College Trustees Leadership Congress. Do I have a motion to approve for up to four members to attend the 2025 ACCT Leadership Congress as presented? Moved. Any discussion? Okay, President Garcia, roll call vote.
Just, student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah, Item 16.01, Public Employee Appointment, Vice President of Instruction. Is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the Vice President of Instruction. This, this recommendation action will approve the employment agreement for the Vice President of Instruction commencing from August 18th, 2025 through July 30th, 2028, with salary placement at Range 15, Column 4, for an annual salary of $249,014.22 and a car allowance of $500 per month, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, President Garcia, roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye, but I missed something. But aye, yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Item 16.02, Public Employment Appointment, Interim Vice President, Human Resources and Public and Employee Relations. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the interim Vice President of Human Resources and Employee Relations. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the interim Vice President of Human Resources and Employee Relations commencing from July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, with salary placement at Range 15, Column 4, for an annual salary of $249,014.28 and a car allowance of $500 per month, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to be clear, this is, it's interim, not permanent. I just, was there a typo? Did I just read it wrong?
It is interim.
This is interim. This is extending a VP Wilson for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Having this appointed doesn't keep us from opening a search for a permanent during that time period.
No, actually, the plan would be to open the search in the spring.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank Terry for filling into the, the role. I think she's an amazing asset and person, and really looking forward to working with her, or continue to work with her.
She's got a big smile on her face, Trustee Perez. All right, President Garcia, could we do a roll call vote?
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.03, Public Employee Appointment, Interim Vice President of Instruction. Is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the interim Vice President of Instruction. This recommendation, this recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the interim Vice President of Instruction commencing from April 28th, 2025 through August 17th, 2025, with salary placement at Range 15, Column 4, for an annual salary of $249,014.22 and a car allowance of $500 per month, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Same deal with Nigalo. Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Well, now he's smiling, so we'll see after we vote.
Okay.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote. President Garcia, please.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.04, Public Employee Appointment, Dean, Student Support Services. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the dean of student support services. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the dean of student support services commencing from August 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027, with salary placement at range 11, column 10, for an annual salary of $197,208.14144 cents, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right.
Thank you, Carlos, for all that you do for our students.
He's smiling too. All right, roll call vote. President Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.5, Public Employment, Employee Appointment, Acting Dean, Applied Sciences and Business. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the acting dean of Applied Sciences and Business. The recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the acting dean of Applied Science and Business commencing from June 17, 2025, through August 17, 2025, with a salary placement at range 10, column 11, for an annual salary of $197,208.14 as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I also want to thank Dr. Anders, Mr. Chair, if I may. She fills in gaps everywhere and just really appreciate all that she does for us.
So, I just wanted to say Jessica has been so instrumental out in Indio Campus. Your dedication for so many, so many years for the College of the Desert has been very instrumental, so thank you for that.
And I will echo the smiling comment, and the parliamentarian is not getting on to me yet for doing that. So, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.06, California School Employees Association, CSEA, and Desert Community College District Tentative Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the California School Employees Association and Desert Community College District Tentative Agreement as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. President Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Student, I'm sorry, trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.07, Initial Proposals, Public Hearing and Acknowledgement of the Initial Proposals from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. We now will conduct a public hearing on the initial proposals from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. Following the public hearing, the board will take action to acknowledge the College of the Desert Adjunct Association's proposals and that the parties commence negotiations. For the public hearing, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes on the topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on the subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these time limits may be extended. Would speakers and attendees who wish to address this item, please come forward, comment now in the chat field or select the raise your hand button to speak. IT, please set a timer for one minute to allow speakers to come forward. And Jeff, has any speakers come forward or asked to speak?
Chair Kinnaman, we have none in the Zoom who've indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. We are down to eight seconds if there's anybody that wants to speak on the matter. Okay, having conducted the public hearing, it is recommended that the board of trustees vote to acknowledge the College of the Desert Adjunct Association's proposals and that the parties commence negotiations. Do I have a motion to approve item 16.07 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, President, any discussion? All right, President Garcia, roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin? Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 16.08, Initial Proposals, Public Hearing and Acknowledgement of Initial Proposals from the Desert Community College District to the College of the Desert Adjunct Association. We now will conduct a public hearing on the initial proposals from the Desert Community College District to the College of the Desert Adjunct Association. Following the public's hearings, the board will take action to adopt the Desert Community College District's proposals and that the parties commence negotiations. For the public hearing, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes on the topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on the subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these time limits may be extended. Would speakers and attendees who wish to address this item, please come forward, comment now in the chat field or select the raise your hand button to speak. IT, please set a timer for one minute to allow speakers to come forward. Mr. Larson, has anybody asked to be recognized?
None of the participants in Zoom have indicated an interest in speaking.
All right, great. Thank you, Jeff. And we are at eight seconds if there's anybody that would like to address the board. Okay, having conducted the public hearing, it is recommended that the board of trustees vote to adopt the Desert Community College District's proposals and that the parties have commenced negotiations. Do I have a motion to approve item 16.08 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All right, President Garcia, a roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin? Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 17.01, Budget Revisions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 budget revisions as presented?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Trustee, I mean, President Garcia. I almost emoted you. President Garcia, roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Resolution number 072425-1, Authorized Signatures. Do I have a motion to approve item 17.02 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes, Chairman. Now I understand there's two Vals, two different bodies, two different people on this.
I will restate for the record, there really is only one. Just joking out there, Val Martinez.
And I'm glad you bring that up for the public to understand. So, thank you, trustee Meyer. There are two, but there's one that says there's one.
Right.
And that one would be President Garcia. Would you like to do a roll call vote?
Yes, I would. Trustee, student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Resolution number 072425-2, Budget Revisions, Adjustments and Transfers. Do I have a motion to approve item 17.30 as presented?
You mean 17.03?
Oh, 17.03. My desk excellence is kicking in. Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Discussion?
I noticed that we did this last month. What is this difference of the budget transfers? Thank you. I'd love to get so the public understands our responsibility with the budget. Thank you.
Calling that VP West to answer the question.
Sure, these are standard budget transfers that are taking place between accounts, ins and outs that balance out depending on the time of year and depending on when they're being funded.
Thank you. So this is a standard procedure. We're not adjusting. We're not, so the public knows our responsibility on that.
That is correct. This is standard procedures that we do each and every, each and every month.
Thank you.
Any other discussion of my colleagues? All right, President Garcia, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin? Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we'll move on to information items. No action is required from the board. The first ones are under Administrative Services. We have three information items. Did you want to elaborate on any of those or do they stand on their own merit?
I'll ask VP West to elaborate if there's anything he wants to comment on.
Yes, what are attached are our third quarter report, investment report, as well as reports from our auxiliary services division that kind of show all of our external revenues throughout our auxiliary services, food services, bookstore, ATMs, all those revenues that are coming in outside of apportionment.
Anything else? Okay. Our next item is information, item 19.01, Academic Senate Resolution. This resolution was submitted by our academic senate. Is there, I guess there's, without the senate president here, it stands as presented, correct?
Yes, and as presented.
Okay. Item 20.01, Public Comments. Request addressed the board of trustees regarding matters not on the agenda. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record or by using the raise your hand function by joining the Zoom link. Presumed to the district administrative procedure 2345, each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comments section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the public who wish to speak regarding matters not related to the agenda. Mr. Larson, Jeff, have we had any public comments that have been received?
Chair Kinnaman, we have no public comments received.
Okay, thank you. Item 21.01, Future Agenda Items. Student trustee James. And at this time, of course, this is when if we have something that we're compelled to ask the administration to bring forward or maybe just an update on something from the past, it's a good time for us to remind staff of that. So we'll start with student trustee James.
I am preparing for the student trustee retreat next month, so I plan to learn a lot during this retreat and apply it when I come back.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Thank you so much. As I always bring up, I'd like to get an update for our food pantry, our, all the different, for all our programs in regards to that. Secondly, wanted to get an update with our desert hot springs, the signage and what's going on in that campus and the other learning, what we call learning centers. So the MECA and all the other small campuses and of course, the Palm Springs. Always, I would love to, just something to note. I would love, the community and the college, I'm sure, would love to always get a monthly update of the Palm Springs campus so we know that your tax dollars are working, are bond. So maybe having in the future always a month, if we can, that's an ask. Just a monthly update, what's going on with our Palm Springs campus. Thank you so much.
Okay, trustee Meyer?
Yeah, to echo trustee Sanchez Fulton, I'd like to see an update on, I don't know exactly the right words, the faculty adoption or integration of AI into the school? Are there committees? Are there groups designed for this and get a report on that, on how that is progressing? Or more importantly, what the roadblocks to that might be, whether they be legislative or other issues?
Trustee Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No real agenda updates. Just want to publicly commend Val Martinez Garcia for the hires and promotions today. I think he's assembling an all-star team, and I'm really excited for that. And also want to congratulate Irene on her new role. We wish her well, and we're going to miss her. And Jeff, you have some huge shoes to fill, but I think you're going to do a great job.
Thank you, trustee Perez. Trustee Odin?
Yes, I would like for us to bring back the traffic study for the Palm Springs campus. And I was saying for the, we need, at the Indian Nation School that we get an update and/or making, well, we're making a commitment to them to support through this process, whatever that may look like. And the strategy for retention.
Okay, and then I only have a couple. President Garcia, an update on what's occurring with the McKinsey Scott funds?
Yes.
I know that that was a significant amount of money that we were recognized and provided from McKinsey Scott. And the other thing is, and I know this is a little bit more difficult because you never know where you're going to be tomorrow or the next day, but some type, and probably not in this venue, but, and you do a really good job in your emails to us, but in different communities where you're presenting, whether it's at a chamber, you know, a city council meeting, et cetera, just assuring that the trustees are aware that in different communities where you're presenting, whether it's at a chamber, you know, a city council meeting, et cetera, just assuring that the trustees are aware of that so that if they're available and would like to or are interested in the topic, that they can participate. And again, I think you do a very, very good job of that, but just a reminder to do that for us is great.
You bet.
Thank you. At this time, the board will now recess to close session. The live feed of this meeting will continue. Board members and President Martinez Garcia, I ask that you please join us in closed session at 12:05 a.m.
Okay.
I will now adjourn the meeting, the regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees at 12:41.
Mr. Chair, you just need to inform the public if there's anything to report out.
Yes.
Reconvene to open session and then you can adjourn.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You know, I am so happy we have such a wonderful parliamentarian that can keep me straightened out. And I will say that the board did not take any official action to report out during closed session. Thank you. And it's been affirmed. So I will now adjourn the regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees at 12:42 PM. Thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful day.